Good afternoon. It is 4:00 PM, June 6, 2022. And I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Work Session in session. And our first item is going to be the annual presentation from the Iowa City Area Development Group. And welcome. We have two people here to present today.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kate Moreland with Iowa City Area Development, and with me today is Austin Kornes, who's our Director of Business Development. So, thank you for having us. As you know, ICAD's mission is to create, collaborate, and lead regional economic development efforts that contribute to the creation and growth of companies, wealth, and quality jobs. And we do this through a spirit of innovation and a culture of sharing that transforms knowledge into economic opportunity. We are nearing our 40th birthday, which is hard to believe. I'm a little older than that, but most of my life it's been around. And we do serve the communities of Iowa City, Corville, Tipton, North Liberty, Kelowna, Solon, Tiffin, Manacolones, West Branch, West Liberty, and all of Johnson County. Our goal is really to be available to assist interstate commerce companies with location or expansion projects, workforce development, and entrepreneurial services. We know that the majority of our growth in our business community comes from 85% of our growth comes from existing businesses in our communities. So, we put a lot of effort into supporting our current businesses, especially over the past few years. To do that, we do an annual survey, a synchronous survey. And so, here are just some results that we would have done last summer from our synchronous interviews, kind of from an overall perspective of all of Johnson County. And then, we'll get into a little bit more Iowa City-specific data. So, you can see here that 93% of the company's market share is stable or increasing. 89% have introduced new products. 91% have plans for new products in the next two years. We identified 810 new jobs through our synchronous visits. An $82.2 million investment identified for expanding and modernizing facilities. A lot of companies look to modernize during the period of COVID when they had a little bit less workforce there to be able to do that. And I'll just commend Austin, who does a lot of these. He did receive an award for Best in Iowa for his work in our synchronous program this year. So, 35% of companies report being at risk. These are some of our down threats or opportunities. 35% of companies report being at a risk of losing high-value employees. So, about a third of companies are concerned about that. These are very similar to national trends with all of the great resignation, a lot of movement of workforce. 67% of companies reported experiencing recruitment problems. 40% of companies report supply chain disruption, as you know. So, this is a little harder to read, but it does give you a little Iowa City comparison with Iowa and Johnson County. And I will say that predominantly, the job growth in Iowa City comes from your manufacturing sector. So, the Parkton Gambles, Oral B's, they grew significantly even during the COVID period because their products were so badly needed. So, I would say that Iowa City companies are faring well. Your numbers are a little bit higher, more positive compared to the state averages, and definitely on par with the county numbers. One exception may be the expansion of real estate in the Iowa City area, which we're keeping an eye on. And that's really, you know, some of our larger employers like ACT and Pearson in Iowa City, that just are, they're not using the same footprint that they were prior to COVID. So, a little bit of shifts happening for some of those large employers. So, we're definitely, I guess, working with them and kind of trying to see how we can repurpose, or they're going to repurpose some of that real estate. About half the companies pre-COVID were looking to expand. And about three-fourths of those are still on track with plans to expand. So, we are seeing still significant hiring, but I will say there is significant remote hiring happening in a lot of companies. And that's again true throughout the nation. When we look at workforce, and you remember, these interviews did take place last summer. And it's really just a snapshot in time. Iowa looks to have had some recruitment challenges. Iowa City does recruitment challenges that are a little bit higher. There are also some greater challenges with internet technology and infrastructure that was, that were reported. But that was true county-wide, too. So, I think there's a good opportunity to be vigilant and continue to invest in that infrastructure that we know is happening right now in Iowa City. Whether people are working at home still or on the work sites, there's still a demand for high-speed internet. And then, just overall, some of the infrastructure needs that we heard about in the visits, regional transportation, affordable childcare, and workforce housing, and rural broadband. These are obviously also workforce issues. So, as we look to support workforce, to assist companies in bringing more people here, these are all important considerations. And then, developable land is always an issue in Iowa City, just with land costs. So, we continue to be cognizant of that as well. So, Austin will head out here in the next few weeks to start interviews all over again. And we'll get kind of some updated data and hoping for some good participation. This is how we look at ways that we can provide programming and be able to provide the right resources for companies when we understand some of the current needs. As you probably know, the game of business attraction has really changed. And we really do target targeted business attractions. So, in the areas of biotech, med tech, in partnership with the university, advanced manufacturing, and then logistics and distribution has been huge over the last several years and really, especially over the last two, and continues to be something. People are looking for warehouses close to the interstate, all those sorts of things as people try to bring things closer to where people are. And then, I just wanted to share a little bit about Project Life. This was our largest project, I know, in my 10 years. And we initiated this back in May of 2021. We had a lead. It was a large biotech vaccine production distribution company. It was a $600 million investment, a 500,000-square-foot facility, 500 jobs at $100,000 a year with benefits. So, it was kind of the unicorn of projects. They looked at 200 sites across 25 states. And we submitted four sites in the region, one being in Iowa City. It's got narrowed down to the one site in North Liberty. And then, we hosted a visit in November. And I will, I would just like to say, I want to thank Jeff and Kelly from Corville. This was an all-hands-on-deck visit. We had the university at the table, Kirkwood, all the city managers, IEDA. We really put the full court press on with everyone's cooperation. And I think even through that process, we built a lot of great relationships. We learned of new assets we have in our community and how we can put those forward. And we stay in touch with the company to this day. And there may be an opportunity down the road. They asked to have a meeting afterward. So, obviously, we learned we were 1B in February, which is just a nice way of saying number two. But we, again, hope there may be an opportunity in the future. And we certainly, it's led to other leads for biotech companies on a smaller scale. So, we're continuing to follow up on some of those. Entrepreneurship has been, always been a tenet of our work. Some of our largest employers started out as startups, IDT, ACT, all spin-outs, MediRev. So, some of these large employers started very small here. So, we employed a new program this year called Builders and Backers. And this is, we're the third city in the United States to host this program. Liz has done an amazing job of kind of spearheading this with Heartland Forward, which is a national organization that helps fund this. We had 10 builders this spring in our cohort, and this coming year, we will have 30. So, we're expanding it to three cohorts over the next year. And we have reached into the community, into places, and connected with people that we normally were not reaching. So, it has been absolutely amazing to see people coming up with ideas, raising their hand. We just, we close, I think, next week, the application process for June. And I think we had 20 applications as of Friday. So, it's a very exciting new program. And then, our goal is really to help those people early stage get to the next stage, which would be an accelerator, venture school, the BIPOC Business Accelerator in the South District. This is really just the beginning of the funnel. And I think we were really missing those people that needed more education and assistance to get going and a little bit of funding. We also have EntroFest coming up this week, so thank you. I know Iowa City is helping sponsor that. Well, how's that at Merge on Thursday and Friday of this week? So, a lot of entrepreneurs in the area. From a workforce development standpoint, we continue to work with our partners at the EA around business or talent attraction marketing. And at this point, we have about 500 people in our talent hub. About half of them have submitted resumes. And these are people outside the area looking to come here. And so, then, we share that information with our employers and work to try to connect those people to opportunities. So, that attraction marketing is going fairly well. We continue to bring our employers together monthly through the Joe Co. Talent Group. That's a partnership with Iowa City Area Business Partnership. We do workforce for young workforce, the ICR Future Work, to really connect kids to careers and to help our education systems connect to business. And then, we will be assisting Kirkwood with their visioning process as they look to kind of reconsider their presence here, the programming that's needed, and really helping connect them to employers' needs so that we ensure that we have the programs that our people and our companies need for the future. We also worked with our Partners to the North on the Inclusive ICR Index. This DEI index was taken by 100 companies, small and medium-sized in our region. And we'll have some results here this summer. But it'll give us a regional picture of where there's some need, where there's some support need for business to be able to have good DEI policies and practices and procedures. So, we will be doing that year in and year out to try to gauge our progress and really see how we can support our businesses in this area. And then, a few other investments we made this year. We did fund the Inclusive Economic Development Plan that Astic Planning did. And I'm sure you'll be hearing results about. I know many of you were at the Strategic Doing Event this past week where projects came out of that when we learned about some of the barriers and opportunities. So, we'll continue to work with that group in our own work to ensure that our work has a lens where we really are working to break down some of those barriers for business. And then, just a few other activities. We expanded, we've never had a commercial MLS, but we were able to partner with a technology company called Resimplify. And that's an add-on to our LOIS, which is very cumbersome technology where we have to enter all the data. Resimplify scoops all of the commercial data up for us. And so, we have a much more robust picture of what our commercial listings are. So, will soon, sorry. I act like it's already happening. It's happening very soon. But we worked with the Iowa City Area Realtors on that, some of our commercial developers. And so, I think it's going to be a really good thing for our region. HNI has come to town. That'll be more formally announced soon, but moved into the new, the old AIC facility. Icy Cannabis took over the McCarrill facility. So, some of these properties that were sitting are now being occupied, which is great. We host build Johnson County events quarterly where we're bringing developers, real estate builders, and our public entities together to have conversations about kind of the future of building, the ease of doing business, and some of the things to look for from a design perspective, from our architects, kind of what's coming in the future. And then, we've been working, Tom's been working closely with the county and a company that's working on this solar triangle in Johnson County. It's currently in a MISO study. So, we're just in year one of that. But it's a 150-megawatt facility that has enough power to power all of Iowa City and Corville. So, it would be an amazing facility if that makes it through the process. It'd probably be acquired by a utility at some point. But we're very optimistic about the potential there. And that would be south of Johnson County, or south in Johnson County. We also continue to help support the diversity markets, the South District SMID, sitting on their board, and just continuing to help grow that area economically. And then, these are just our KPIs that we keep track of for the three-year period of our campaign. Just to give you an idea of kind of where we are, we're on target for all of our, on target or above for all of our categories. And in light of COVID, I'm very proud of the team because it's not been an easy couple of years, being able to have met these goals. So, wanted to share those with you as well.
What is a KPI?
The performance indicator, key performance indicator.
Thank you.
So, when we did our campaign, we just shared with our investors that we would keep track of these metrics to know if we're being successful. And then, the Iowa EdTech Collaborative, we received a grant, federal grant, for $391,000 to advance ed tech in Iowa. So, this is a statewide initiative that ICAD is running point on. And our goal really is to build the ed tech industry, to further build it. We're the home of so much great educational programming, testing, assessment, and technology. And so, we wanted, we had a study done at the state level. And because of our workforce and the number of companies, they felt like we were the place where we could grow that for the rest of the state. So, we have Mark Butland, who is the former dean of Kirkwood here in Iowa City, that's heading that up. And he's doing a great job bringing partners together from all over the state to really see what we can do to increase the number of ed tech startups, to advance innovation in education, to become thought leaders. We worked with educators and high school students this spring on entrepreneurial skills. That Design Dash, we hope, will spread across the state. We're working to pilot that here and then, and let others then take the mantle and have it in other parts of the state. So, there's a huge opportunity there. Post-COVID, ed tech is a booming industry. We knew it was big before, but now, it's really booming. And I think one of the opportunities with the College of Ed has been the social-emotional learning piece of this, the mental health components of this. And they're doing so much great work in that area. So, Dan Clay, the dean there, has been really involved in this as well. So, lots of good work happening in that.
Has there been any, I'm sorry. Has there been any pushback about the social-emotional learning piece of it? Because I know that there's, there has been some, you know, kind of national debate about how inclusive or not inclusive it is. And I just wondered if that's something that is on the radar? Because I know equally, as you're presenting, there's so much that you're doing about DEI. So, I just wondered if sort of those connections were being made so that there could be some discussion that sort of helps solidify its importance?
Right. What I would say, one of the, one of the working groups is working on kind of a quality seal of approval, which if we could get, we're hoping to get that going in Iowa. So, this becomes a place where if you have an ed tech company and you want to have it able to pilot in a school district or with an educator, we will help you do that. But you need to meet certain requirements, and we need to get feedback. And then, we have a group of academics and industry experts that will say this meets. And they're working on what the standards are for that right now. So, that would be one of them. Like, does this meet the requirements that we need it to? I think that's where there's an avenue for us to be a big player in that. There's also, you know, whether, a lot of school districts have said, when we've met with them, we get inundated with these ed tech companies. We don't know what's, you know, good or bad or indifferent. And they don't have time to vet those, right? They're busy taking, you know, educating kids and being administrators. And so, if there's a part we can play to try to kind of help pilot the things that are ready for, to be piloted, that have been vetted a little bit, then that's a role we feel like we could potentially play. So, that's a great point on the DEI piece, though. I think there's some old programs out there. There's some new ones coming online. And that's certainly something that we need to keep an eye on.
Sounds fantastic. Thank you.
And then, just lastly, I'd share, I know I've been in front of you before, and I hope we will be back in hopefully July to share with you the final pieces of the Better Together 2030 Vision. So, we are very close to being able to unveil that to the public. And thanks to all of you who participated and provided feedback. We're very hopeful that this, and I can tell you with certainty, it's going to nest nicely underneath the larger seven-county ECI cog vision that we've been working on as well. This will just be very specific to Johnson County. And my partners on this endeavor will be back in front of you to, will do kind of a roadshow to unveil the plan here over the next 30 to 60 days. So, we're going to hit the ground running. The work is really just beginning. So, thank you to all of you. I know a lot of great projects and programs and things that are happening are going to fit nicely. They're already underway. We just want to be able to keep moving together and growing in the same direction and supporting one another and collaborating. So, just very appreciative of all your support of ICAD and our work. I have an amazing team that has, just like all of you, had a rough couple of years. But they pivoted, and we've pivoted back. And I will say, I feel like our community, our businesses are thriving. This is obviously a place people want to live. We've grown 16% over the last 10 years. And I checked, it puts us fifth in the Midwest behind Sioux Falls, Bismarck, Fargo, and Des Moines in percentage of growth. So, I think it's important to note that we are in very good company and we're growing at a very good pace. That said, workforce continues to be a challenge for everyone. So, we need to stay vigilant. We know a lot of our growth is in our immigrant population. And so, we're going to work hard in the next several years to ensure that we're partnering with our education partners and our businesses to make sure we're upskilling people and putting them in a position that they can be economically successful coming out of this period of time. So, that will be something we'll be working hard on. Yeah, and I just, I want to again thank you. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have for Austin or myself.
Kate, do you have any idea what, if there are any particular elements in that, in that one biotech effort that caused us to be 1B instead of 1A?
Yeah, thank you. We, we got a lot of feedback from the company when, when we finally learned, after about a year of working with them, that we had come in second. They, they pointed to a couple very specific things, primarily around the incentive package that, that we were able to put in front of them. There was a couple ways that the, the place they chose framed their incentive package that was more beneficial to them upfront. And they were interested in lowering their initial costs as kind of a first priority. So, they, they pointed to that. And then, there were a couple other issues with just the way that they were able to communicate with some state and federal legislatures legislators on, on the project that they, they liked the relationship more in another state. So, we, we received glowing feedback for the region. And they said that when they look to do an expansion, they're going to be reaching out to us. So, I think the thing to highlight the most there, though, is we've already heard from other companies. We've heard from a lot of folks who read the articles, saw that we showed well, and they want to learn why. So, we've already, it's led to some other leads that we're really excited about.
Thanks.
Now, I'm curious, do we know what community or what state they landed in?
Manhattan, Kansas.
Kansas, yeah. And this is a company that was very early-stage revenue, revenue stage. So, that funding for them for upfront costs was critical. And that was a state package. That wasn't something we could necessarily compete with, so. And we didn't know that at the time, but we couldn't have competed at that level, anyway.
Do we know the 16% growth in population? Where are people coming from?
The 16% growth? That's based on the census data.
An idea of where they're immigrating from?
The, I don't know if I've dug into the migration data. The, I know our, I think the immigrant population, what, do you remember the percentage, Jeff?
I don't remember a percentage. Looking back at the past decade, most of our growth has been in international immigration. I think the general trend that, that we see is, you know, the historic pipeline of rural Iowa to the urban centers is starting to dry up. And more and more of our population growth is having to come from out of state or out of country.
We do see migration from Illinois. I know that. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Yes, really appreciate all the work that ICAD does. And I know our businesses absolutely do. All right, we are on to our next item, which is the presentation of the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. We're going to welcome Tracy Heishu.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks, Mayor. Noted, I'm Tracy Heishu with Neighborhood and Development Services. And as you know, the city adopted Affordable Housing Action Plan back in 2016 to support and encourage affordable housing in our community. It outlined 15 action steps that we could take. 14 of the 15 of those are completed. The 15th action step was incorporated in this plan, and we'll be going over through those recommendations as we go through this. I did want to thank, the report was possible due to a committee of members that you see up on the, on the screen. I want to thank them for their time, their willingness to serve. This was a year-long process, and just sharing their expertise. And that is why you're getting the recommendations and the plan that you see before you. I wanted to go over just the timeline. So, back in November 2020, city council asked us to come up with an action plan to build off that, that previous one. We formed the committee. We held our first meeting in February 21. From March to October of '21, we met monthly. After that, we did continue to meet by email, running by drafts, revisions. They reviewed a ton of data. So, they reviewed housing market analysis, housing reports, summary information, census data, Fair Action Housing Study. And based on all that information, we formulated recommendations. But we also had a vigorous public outreach, and that was the summer of '21. It included the ARPA, all the citywide survey listening posts. We had outreach activities that were very, very effective. So, we went out to neighborhood events. We went to our food bank distribution sites. We had staff there. We had a list of 15 to 20 actions. And basically, we asked people, we'll give you three votes. If we were to fund something, what would we fund that would help your household best as it comes to affordable housing? And those recommendations are, I think, on the last page or in the appendix for you to review. Went very well. We met with stakeholders. We input it, we got input from the organizations with the high-level expertise in housing. And then, we completed the report in '22 in April. And that was in your council packet a couple of weeks ago. Throughout this process, I've been asked, what is affordable housing? That gets asked a lot when you're out in the community. It's basically your income, what is 30% of your income should be for housing plus utilities? Now, it can be any income, but what's affordable to you is what the 30%. Now, when it comes to what the government, like city, federal, state, what we will subsidize, we usually limit the beneficiaries to those that are making below 80% of median income. Now, if we go to homeownership activities, sometimes you see programs go up to 100%, 110% median income. And for renters, we typically cap that at 60%. So, those are the folks we're helping. And we primarily, even though we say we go up to 60% renters, you'll see that in our programs, we typically assist people at below 50% of median income, and a lot of times, below 30%. Then, people ask, oh, what is affordable housing when it comes to rent or homeownership? So, all of our programs typically limit rent to the fair market rent. And does that mean it's affordable to someone at 30%? No. It means the HUD fair market, means about 40% of the housing in our market are below that threshold. 60% are above. So, it just means this is modest housing for our market. Now, the Lytec, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project, will go by income. So, you'll see different, you'll see different limits for different programs. And then, the home price, HUD sets the home price for $247,000. We can't assist housing that's above this threshold. Does that mean it's affordable? No, not for many people, but we can't exceed that threshold. Now, can we have programs that are below that threshold? Sure, and we do. After the committee went through all that data and looked at all the information, they, they highlighted certain data that they felt were major takeaways. And this is what they, they highlighted, is that in our market, our renters are cost-burdened. Cost-burdened means that they're paying more than 30% of their income. Severely cost-burdened means that they're paying more than 50% of their income on housing. So, you can see the numbers for renters and homeowners. Our rents have increased substantially. They went for, they've increased 11.3% in Johnson County over a five-year period. We're looking at the American Community Survey data. And there's sparse or no available housing for those people at 30% of median income on the private market. So, there's 52 households over the age of 25. So, that, that takes out the student impact in those numbers that are making less than $29,999. So, if you're at the top of that 30% affordable, at that top of 30% median income, affordable rent to you is most likely $750. If you're making minimum- rent to you is most likely $750. If you're making minimum wage or you're on SSI, your affordable rent's probably closer to $300. So, the private market has a hard time coming up with housing to house those people at 30% or below. And our housing market is expensive. So, you can see where the Iowa median home value is, $147,000. In Iowa City, we're about $70,000 above that. In some markets in Iowa, you can buy a safe, decent, or affordable, modest home for $70,000. Corvin, Corville, North Liberty are even having higher median housing values.
Interesting.
We have a lack of affordable homes for those under 50% of median income. We only sold 113 homes in '21 to, that are, were below $150,000. So, a lot of thing goes into your ability to buy a home and what factors, but if you have minimal debt and one car payment, you're looking probably at a house about $150,000 that we would consider affordable to you. And one of the last major takeaways is that we don't know the full impact of the pandemic. We're seeing shortages in building materials and labor. Our builders are reporting a 20% to 30% increase in costs from last year, and we don't know, will it go down? Will it continue? Will it get worse? Those are the things of the pandemic we don't know yet. And I wanted to throw in, this was not an affordable housing market analysis, but, or, in Affordable Housing Action Plan, but Kirk Lehman, one of our planners, did a residential analysis in, in 2021, and it looked at our final, our final plots and our building permit activity. And it was concerning for us because we anticipate 10,000 new residents by 2030. If the final plots are planted lots and our building permit activity continues, then we'll only accommodate less than half of the new residents. And so, that means our resident, the folks that are coming into an area, they're going to have to go to upline communities, or the cost of housing is just going to get more expensive, because if you limit the supply and the demand continues, we're looking at it maybe even more problems with affordable housing in the near future. I also like putting this statistic up, too, because, like I said, when I, when I present to other communities, I present to the public, they just say, oh, affordable housing is just needed by our students, that, you know, we, we have a high income in Johnson County and Iowa City that, and it's all driven by students. So, if you take out householders under age 25, we still have 9,000 households that make less than $49,999, and that's basically your 50% median income range. So, we have a huge need in our area. And as I said, 9% of the Iowa City homes sold for less than $150, with over half our market being sold for homes under $250,000.
This slide right here, does this account, the supply, does that account for student housing that's being built as well?
When we were looking at financial or planted lots, it was, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the supply of planted lot, or planted residential lots.
Yep, yes. The problem with, it's harder to predict multifamily because you're talking about redevelopment, and if you have the Riverfront Crossings District, it's harder to predict what will be developed, because you have to buy it, demo it. So, it's a better indicator of, of greenfield sites. So, that, the multifamily residential is part of the Riverfront Crossing, it's still not going to meet our total demand, because, as you know, many people might not, a high-rise living environment downtown might not be perfect or ideal for, for everyone. So, we're still concerned about how we house all our residents coming in. So, based on, based on the information that you saw, the committee formulated three recommendations, and they were broken out in three categories. There are recommendations for existing policies and programs, for development regulations, and for programs and policies based on housing income, our household income, if we got more funds. We're going to take a hard look at development regulations. We're looking at those situations of, we'll have difficulty coming up with the money that we need to subsidize out of our affordable housing. So, we need the private, we need to work with the private market, and how do we create win-win situations to encourage private developers to make a diversity of housing in our, in our outline development? Because if, to be honest, new construction is typically not affordable unless you have great subsidy. So, however, if you have small, modest housing, duplexes, townhomes, that's the affordable housing of tomorrow. So, we want to make sure all neighborhood has a variety of housing in them. So, the recommendations for existing policies and programs, the first recommendation was to discontinue the affordable housing location model. We adopted the location model back in 2011. The committee felt it wasn't producing enough housing, so they wanted to remove the model, and we just basically incent or prioritize developments in neighborhoods that we feel have a lack of housing opportunity. So, that was the first recommendation. The second was to acquire staff analysis and funding recommendations before they go to HCDC for CDBG home projects. And a lot of that was, we don't know at any one time the expertise that will find in the Housing Community Development Commission. Some people might have some knowledge, but there are times where we might not have anybody familiar with housing finance, or financial expertise, or even building. So, or even the home regs, the Home and Community Development Block Grant Regulations. So, they want a staff to make a recommendation for HDC to review, and then they provide their recommendation from that. They don't have to match staff's recommendation, but just to get the logic or what the reasoning was, and then just to generally be more transparent about how we recommend funding. They recommended allocating more funds to the Affordable Housing Fund, basically increasing the amount by 3% every year. But then, the next recommendation was largely, we have a set aside in our Affordable Housing Fund for money going to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. And what this would basically say, right now, we separate the money. We have a general set aside, and then we have a set aside for low-income housing tax credit projects. So, what they're saying is that if we don't get a low-in, LIHTC project, or we, it doesn't get funded by the Iowa Finance Authority, then that can go back into the general pool, and they can allocate that out to general applications. And then, the next one was the, to implement the Risk Mitigation Fund. And we do have funds budgeted for that. We just have not been able to establish a relationship with the service provider to implement it. So, a risk mitigation fund basically functions as a landlord guarantee. It says that we're going to provide added protection for landlord, for someone who maybe has limited income, might have a criminal history, has a poor rental history, and will basically say, if you rent to this person, we will help you with, if you have lost income, if you are lost rent, if you have excessive damages, or you have legal fees that are beyond your security deposit, is to get them comfortable renting to a person that might, they might not rent before. So, we will be working with that, and we'll probably in the next month or two, come back to you with a proposal for that. The next recommendation was basically policies, and it goes after your permanent affordability. We partner more with nonprofit affordable housing providers whose mission is to have affordable housing. So, when we assist them, they keep this housing in their, in their portfolio, and it's pretty much permanent affordability. We also allow those nonprofit affordable housing developers to apply for additional funds to support their operations. It's to increase their capacity. So, they might come to us for, out of the Opportunity Fund. If they become a Cho to a community housing development organization, we allow them to apply for that. We also allow developers to apply for technical assistance. So, if they want to develop, like in the South District, it has a form-based code, they would apply to us through various funds to get money for architectural engineering. So, we help them build their capacity to, to comply with our regulations and to build. Might be that they want to incorporate energy efficiency, so we allow them to tap into climate action grants. Next one was to encourage, but not mandate, a permanent affordable housing in our new residential annexations. We're trying to create those win-win situations that lead to permanent affordability. Do we identify a revenue stream that would help us buy the lot to, to give an RFP to a, to nonprofit, to, to buy that lot, to operate as affordable housing, so that we work together with the developer when we're annexing? And to increase efforts to educate all tenants about tenant rights and responsibilities and how to address housing issues. And we are working with the University of Iowa Student Government. I believe you saw their magnets about educating students about who to call if they have problems with their housing, if they have problems with their lease. So, we're working through those, and we'll try to continue those efforts to educate tenants about their rights.
I have a question before you go on. For the CDBG Home Fund, it was before this one, increase of transparency, I guess I was curious as to maybe one example?
Maybe, um, we have a scoring criteria that we ask the HDC members. So, when they look at a policy, they rank it based on certain, there's a certain point score. But, when you go to allocate that project, they might, let's say they got 90% of the points, but they're only going to get 50% of their allocation. They want to know why, why that is. If they scored highest, should they not get the most?
I got it.
So, just, there's not a perfect way to allocate funds. So, just more transparency in how we funded and why we funded what we did. And I think that the staff recommendation when we do that budget will help. You know, it might be that high need, they have the capacity, but do they have the capacity to do four homes as opposed to two homes? So, do you fully fund two homes? And even though that might not be what the, the scoring criteria says. So, just greater transparency, I believe, in how we allocate.
Thank you.
The next recommendations regarding development regulations, and some of these are technical, some of these are, we'll need a comprehensive plan amendment, so that's why you're going to see us coming to you later to basically get your priorities and about what you want us to proceed with. For single and multifamily, these recommendations apply to both. We'll encourage infill development by just increasing flexibility, reducing the minimum amount of land eligible to apply for a planned overlay zoning, create more form-based code regulations for additional neighborhoods, and we'll, we'll focus on those ones that we, we know that are growth areas. Applicable to single family, we see this a lot, I think, for a lot of the stakeholders, this was their number one, was allow by right more types of dwelling units in single-family zoning districts such as duplexes, zero-lot lines, that small-scale residential component, instead of seeing single-family detached over and over and over block after block. So, we'll be looking at that. Increase the allowable number of bedrooms in our single-family zonings for, basically, your duplex zero-lot lines. Allow accessory dwelling units in what we call ADUs. Some people call them mother-in-law, there's a whole bunch of names that these go by. Under more circumstances, because right now, we don't allow freestanding buildings. They have to be attached to the house, the garage. We require it to be owner-occupied, the main house. So, we'll be looking at, how do we encourage, because we don't see it that often in Iowa City, and in what locations do we encourage it? For multifamily, it was to facilitate multifamily development by purchasing land. We have had land banking in the past. We have lots in Lindeman that we purchased previously. To be even more proactive, we conduct a city-initiated rezoning to allow multifamily housing or mixed housing in areas supported by the comprehensive plan. So, if the comprehensive plan, if you're by an arterial, if you're by transportation, then we would automatically just zone that multifamily, so someone doesn't have to come in and try to get the multifamily zoning, because typically, people oppose multifamily zoning in a lot of locations. Allow multifamily dwelling units with more than three bedrooms, and that'd be, be, be because the LIHTC require, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Application basically says, a certain percentage of your development has to have four bedrooms. If we don't allow it by code, then it doesn't happen. So, do we change that? That's a recommendation that we change, so that more of our LIHTC developers are successful when they, they go to compete in the IFA round. And then, these were additional recommendations. So, if we get more money and we dedicate that to affordable housing, how do we spend that? And we try to go, like I said, a healthy market, healthy housing market provides housing at everybody's incomes. It provides in their different stages of life. So, we have recommendations for zero to 30, 31 to 60, and 60 to 100. So, under the, so for zero to 30, these are the recommendations. Like I said, the landlord risk mitigation fund was heavily encouraged. We continue to support existing permanent supportive housing, the housing first, such like Shelter House, it did for individuals that are, that experience chronic homelessness. If we can expand that into families experiencing chronic homelessness next. Allocate ARPA funds and future city funds to support those large investments that prioritize permanent affordability in those households with lower incomes. And, oh, just in general, increase funds for, for all those things that we need to see in housing. Better energy efficiency, it lowers housing costs. So, if you have a lower utility bill, it's helping you with your total housing cost. Aging in place initiatives, and because these are folks at zero to 30, provide grants whenever we can. 31 to 60% of median income, it was continuing our security deposit and expanding, security deposit assistance, and eviction prevention programs. And it's also about reducing energy efficiency, or lower utility costs through energy efficiency, and supporting down payment assistance also. And it was important to include that credit and financial counseling to potential home buyers. And then, when you get to 61 to 100, it's the, the bottom two continued. The next step is just to get your count, feedback. I mean, it was a, it was a lengthy plan. Recommendation, like I said, there are almost 30 recommendations, is to get your feedback, and then what staff plans to do is to create a five-year implementation plan, and we'll bring that back for you to consider and look at. It will combine the Affordable Housing Action Plan recommendations. Urban planning will be in the next couple of months, be presenting their housing development priorities to you regarding your strategic plan priorities as they relate to housing, and what recommendations, such as what comprehensive plan amendments we, we proceed with. And then, recently, we got a invested health grant, a collaboration grant with Henderson, Nevada, and Eau Claire, Wisconsin. We went out to Fort Collins, met with a planning consultant called Logan Simpson, and they made recommendations about how, in our new development, how do we get that diversity of housing? You know, how, how do we get the duplexes, the townhomes, the small, small-scale residential, in addition to single-family detached? So, we'll combine all those, make a five-year implementation plan, and bring that back to you for consideration. And that, that is a brief highlight of the Affordable Housing Action Plan. Do you guys have any questions?
One comment real quick, just to thank you to all of those who worked on this. I think, I think I sent out an email, too, but just to reinforce that. Excellent work, a lot of really data-driven report, a lot of information in this. Obviously, a lot of time and effort went into it. So, thank you to all those that worked on that. That's, this is a really helpful document.
Thank you.
I have a really broad policy question, Tracy. From these recommendations, it looks to be kind of a pragmatic approach, like, for example, the 3% increase in our Affordable Housing Fund. So, for the five-year implementation plan, do you have a sense of sort of where that will get us in relation to the problem of the lack of affordable housing? Like, are we going to be able to peg it that way as far as addressing the shortfalls that you identified at the top of your presentation?
It wasn't necessarily Affordable Housing Study, so I don't think we'll completely, I don't know if this implementation, implementation plan will basically solve affordable housing in Iowa City. Most likely not. But it gets us closer and closer to helping more and more people. So, that, that's our goal. And we could put number, numerical things, but when you deal with development regulations, like even though we, we put like, we can change our zoning to encourage like a minimum density or different types of housing, we don't know what the private market will actually build. Just like we have ADU regulations right now that allow accessory dwelling units, we just don't get many. So, we're trying to figure out what is it that people don't like about the regulations we have, what would encourage more. So, I don't know if we can get to strong numerical numbers, but we could try, we can with the programs that we're assisting. That's much easier. So, if we're going to adopt a landlord risk mitigation, we can estimate about how many people will get into housing. So, for our programs and, our programs, we can definitely put, we can attach numbers. For our development regulation changes, we can estimate, but we don't know.
If I could add to that, just to put some numbers in perspective, I think when we're subsidizing units, new construction is obviously more expensive than, than rehabs. But if we use the number of 30,000 per unit assisted, which I think is fairly, it's in the range of what would, what we'd expect. We're helping with $1 million a year, 33, 34 households. And you just look at the growth numbers. If, if we're really expecting 10,000 people to, to come to our community in the next decade, you can do the math there. There's 10,000 people, and we're assisting 33 units. We're able to assist a very small number. So, we're, we're working uphill with the supply and demand issues. You know, the development regulation piece is, is really, is really important. Unfortunately, that's also not going to be immediately felt by the community. Some of those policy changes may take decades to actually bear fruit. And I think we also have to remember that what we, what we want is the new construction that's built today, which may not be affordable right out of the gates, but it may be affordable, it may be our affordable housing stock of a different generation. And, and I think you can look at Iowa City's affordable housing stock now that was probably largely built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. That probably wasn't affordable housing right out of the gate either, right? That was probably maybe middle-to-upper-income housing at the time. So, it's, it's very complex, but $1 million, even with a 3% escalator, is not going to solve this problem. You know, we'll update this report in five to 10 years, and I hope we've made good progress, but with the growth pressures we're facing and the supply that we have right now, I suspect we'll be, be doing good just to keep pace.
So, I'm really happy to see that, that you're talking about a risk mitigation fund. From, from what I've read about them in the past, they're actually pretty successful, and they rarely get drawn on. Would, would something like that also be available to people who rent to people who are on Section 8, or who otherwise get housing vouchers? Because, I mean, I think the state legislature has passed a law that essentially says, not everybody has, you don't have to rent to them, but if you have, if landlords have the guarantee that, you know, if that something happens, they'll be made whole, that make, that could make a big difference.
Just because you have a voucher. I mean, when we pull vouchers, there's a certain percentage of, of tenants that won't find a house with it, even though we've given them up to a year to search. And it's because of rental history, or eviction history, or whatever reason landlords are reluctant to lease for them. And if there's great competition for units, they don't have to. So, yes, so, when we create that landlord risk mitigation program, it'll be anybody that's housed a tenant, or how, what do you call it, hard to house. So, if that's a Section 8 tenant, or a Housing Choice voucher tenant, yes, we would help those, them, too. And we're really relying on a social service provider to build those, like a case manager, building a relationship with landlords, so they feel comfortable saying, I have a tenant, we're going to be working- we're going to be working with this tenant throughout their occupancy, the lease, and we have this fund, so if there's excessive damage or you, they leave early, we can protect that. These are, here are the funds for that. Yeah, from prior, from other cities that have done it, they rarely get drawn on. It's more of a comfort to the landlord to lease to that person. So, but we would prepare to, if there's a claim and it qualifies, we pay it out.
It almost makes some of those people who are seen as high-risk, some of the lowest risk, and it lays bare some of the prejudices as well.
You talked about permanent affordability, and one of your slides was preserving affordable housing. Does that relate to, we've heard a lot of comments about some of the affordable housing units are for 10 years or for 20 years rather than perpetuity? So is that what you're referring to? Maybe get rid of that 10-year, 20-year limit?
So you have a nonprofit, they buy a house, it's 10 years later. Even though you subsidized at the beginning, over time, if they have, if they're limited in their rent that they can collect, houses, you know, you need a roof every 15 years, 15 to 20 years. You need substantial renovations. And so if we do permanent affordability, that means we're making a commitment also to funding rehab. So you're going to see acquisition and rehab of older housing stock is, that's how you produce a lot of affordable housing today. So that's why it's important that we have that stock and we zone, and we change our regulations so there's that stock, you know, because I think a lot of things that we build, buy right now for affordable housing, as Jeff mentioned, or 50, 60, 70s, even 90s. So you rarely, unless it's a Lytec, you rarely see new housing in their portfolios unless it's through some program like a Lytec project.
I think the, you know, the devil is in the details with this sort of plan, and I do think that, you know, some of the areas where higher density has potential is also the areas where we have, from my perspective or sense, a competition between affordability for student housing and the general public. And so there's, that's a challenging situation. I mean, I do feel we, I know the focus is with this has not been on the student housing question, right? It's, that's a different question.
Yeah.
But it does seem to me it needs to be addressed, because right now there is considerable competition in the university impact zone between the affordability needs of the students and everyone else.
There'll be a lot of work.
And so all the duplexes and the, you know, what I'm concerned with is while I, on the one hand, promote, you know, all the strategies and more that are in this report, including in addition to what I guess could be referred to as the U standard zoning, allowing higher density, the dimensional standards and lifting or waiving the off-street parking requirement, things of that sort. However, if we were to do that in the university impact zone, it could just incentivize more student housing, which I'm not against, but, you know, we do have the, in our comprehensive plan, trying to achieve that balance. So it's a challenging issue, and, you know, I hope we can come up with a way of resolving that, because I think some of the largest potential for getting at affordable housing is in the center of Iowa City, the university impact zone.
You'll see some of these recommendations are easy, we can accomplish them, you know, if you're okay with it, we can do it tomorrow. You know, some of these are going to require a comprehensive plan amendment, and that's when you're going to dig into the details. When is this appropriate? Is it appropriate in the central planning district? Is it not? Is it just part of greenfield development? So those are things that when we, like I said, that's why we're doing a five-year implementation plan, because if you're talking about a major comprehensive plan update or a new comprehensive plan, that's going to take some time. That takes, might even take a consultant, might be a multi-year process. And so that's when we're answering those questions and going out for public input. So like I said, that implementation plan will be important to figure out how we, what things we can do that are most impacted in the short term and what's going to take in maybe a multi-year commitment, and then figuring that out. So, not easy questions.
Well, in addition, not all the under 25s are students. I mean, there are plenty of younger adults sort of between high school and that age who are, who've opted for, to not go to college or to go to trade school or something, or who are working but are still low-income.
Yeah, the way the census reports data, we didn't have a great way of kind of mitigating student impact besides by age. So yes, there are plenty of folks under 25 that aren't college students that fall in the 50, 30% median income. So we acknowledge that, it was just a way to answer folks when they basically say, you're just reporting you need affordable housing, or you don't have low-income folks because they're just students. So that's kind of what we fall back and say, that's not necessarily true.
Thank you so much. All right. We are on to clarification of agenda items. Here in nothing, we'll go to information packets. We'll start with May 19th.
I just, I don't really have clarification about IP2, the information on the strategic plan final report. Really appreciated the staff's putting all that together, because there are some very, very challenging issues that have been dealt with, that did in the end fit under, pretty much, within the strategic plan. To be honest, the only element that occurred to me that was probably missing when you're talking about COVID was the effort to really reach all people in the community by making most of our, most of our information and announcements, doing it in multiple languages, both by video and written. And I think that was an important element, I'd love to see that inserted in there.
We'll move on to June 2nd. And we do have IP6, the memo from the Community Police Review Board that we need to discuss. So maybe we'll, Eric, did you want to lead us through that request?
Well...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. I don't have a whole lot to offer. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to review, I've got it up before me, the packet information with proposed amendments for the police, Community Police Review Board. As you'll see, there are a number of different changes that are proposed, all of which have been put forth by the CPRB. I guess I'm here to answer any questions you may have, or if you'd like to take these and not those, or however you like to split it up, or if you'd like to discuss any of them further, I'm happy to try to facilitate that.
Mayor, maybe I can just offer, there wasn't much discussion at the CPRB meeting about the proposed changes. My understanding from the presentation from their attorney, Patrick Ford, was that it was mostly to just kind of align with what they're doing already. The one deletion at the beginning, as far as, it was relating to, sorry, not at the beginning, where they struck language saying, making a recommendation that the police chief or the city manager reverse or modify their findings. He indicated that there wasn't really authority or basis for that in the ordinance, and so that was not something that had occurred before, didn't expect it to occur, and was making a clarification there. It's what I recall from their conversation.
And I should clarify too, for the benefit of council, remember, this is one of those independent boards or commissions that my office does not staff. And so as Laura has indicated, that's represented by Pat Ford, a local private attorney. And so that's why our office doesn't really have a whole lot to offer about this.
So what is the, just wanted to maybe, are there any other comments from councilors? Or how do you propose we kind of, I think we can certainly, you know, go through and kind of determine where we want to be.
Sure. I felt the comments or the suggested revisions make perfect sense to me, and it's interesting, Laura, that you were saying that the clarification on that struck language was really just to say, well, that wasn't actually something that was possible for them to do anyway, because as it reads now, I was like, I like the clarity of that, to say there will be a report that says exactly what the decisions were and why, why there's disagreement. So it might have been a nicety of language or of a point of law, but I like the actual revision, because I think that there's a very clear action item for a situation like this. So I just, I appreciated the revisions very much, and I'd love to learn that this is stuff that is actually already being done, because it seems to, in this climate where there is so much that the state has dictated what can and can't be done, that at least the review board is trying to promote some proactive steps.
I also appreciated these comments from the board and value their opinion. Obviously, they gave this a lot of thought as far as what they felt could help make their task easier, so I'm in favor of it.
Having been the liaison for a while, these, as opposed to some of the other stuff that we got earlier, struck me basically as common sense and a way to make things run as smoothly as possible.
Okay. So it sounded like there is majority support to accept these amendments.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need to...
We'll draft them and have them on a future agenda.
Okay, all right. Any other comments about that one? June 2nd, any other items there that we want to discuss?
I wanted to discuss IP4 on the Happy Hollow Ball Field update. And I think in brief, basically, what I would ask is that, you know, two years ago, approximately, the ball, the ball field, the infield was replaced with turf grass, with a reclassification by that process to a recreational field. And at that time, there was considerable community comment and concern generated by that action, in part because of the fact that we did not have any kind of neighborhood public engagement in the process. And so we discussed it at that time, that I think in part because of that lack of a community participation in the planning of that reversion or conversion of the field, that we would revisit it in roughly two years to, in a sense, in my view, kind of assess if whether the, you know, the issues and concerns that were expressed two years ago still had, you know, were still there, were still of a concern to the community, or if in fact, in assessing, you know, what had been done, that there was different perspectives, whatever they may be. And so what I would ask is that we, having made that decision to at least consider having that public process at this time, that we proceed with that as a response to that specific issue of the field. So in other words, have that public process. Sometime, I would suggest in late summer, early fall, sometime in September, that we would engage the community, because it would be more than simply a neighborhood process because of the fact that the ball field was used by people from all over the city. And have that meeting and see where, you know, where the public is in terms of how the field is being used now. And in a sense, you know, in the work that I did, we would often do kind of a post-occupancy evaluation, you know, where you have an opportunity after a period of time to assess how well the facility is performing. And so it's not uncommon to do this, and in a sense, this would be an opportunity to kind of see, you know, how things have gone and what if any concerns are either still valid, or if new concerns have arisen. But in any event, just kind of see where things are now to help us, help inform how we move forward.
I was on council when we had this discussion, and I do remember it being a topic that the council at that time thought we would revisit within two years. Some decisions had already been, you know, made and expressed. And so I think it would be appropriate to do a conversation, as you've mentioned, just to get a report and see what, where the community is.
I would support that.
I would too.
Yep.
So... So just saying, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting this year to talk about the ball field, and then next year we're going to have another one to talk about the major park renovation, the playground replacement. That's how it's going to play out.
Yeah. Well, you can speak. I think if we visited about the ball field, that can inform what's going to happen next year, is my thought.
I just think we need to keep the commitment that we made. And I understand the other has been shifted. I think it's just, I mean, it could turn out that the community has moved on and is used to using other ball fields now and says, let's just leave it, or it could be, you know, we don't know what the outcome's going to be.
Yeah, it's not, and it's not a matter of really, you know, if the decision is to revert to dirt, then the decision's to revert to dirt, we'll happily do that. But there's a lot of staff capacity that gets tied up in these efforts. And when we're just going to the same park and having the same discussion in two, you know, back-to-back years, there is an impact to that. And my preference would be, you know, for the council, just if you want it back to dirt, put it back to dirt. We can do that this year, we'll use our operating budget and we'll do it and we'll move forward. But it's a lot of effort to go through a public input process like this, to get that feedback, and then to do it again the next year, to do work in the same park.
Is there a way to get public input on this electronically or a different avenue than...
Yeah, we could put all those together, surveys. I'm not opposed to doing it, I just want you to understand the impact of duplicating this type of effort, because essentially, we're going to be going and asking the questions about the park for two consecutive years. So it's just an acknowledgement that that's a lot of time and energy spent on that one park in back-to-back years. If that's what you want, that's fine, we can do it. But I just want to make sure the council's aware of some of the organizational capacity issues that we face. And this is just, you know, one more thing that we're going to work into our schedule this year and the next year.
When next year, would next year's meeting be?
We're getting started on planning for next year's capital projects this summer. So we typically would try to combine them with a party in the park or a wreck-and-roll type of event, where we can get just general neighborhood interest out there. So it'd typically be the summer of next year is what we would plan.
What about moving up the playground? I mean, if you want to consolidate meetings, because the playground was originally scheduled for 2023, and it was moved back.
Right.
So if we want to try to consolidate the public process, we could move it back up.
You could move the project back up, there's financial implications to that, if you want to slide those funds up. Or we can get input two years early, essentially. We could do it this year, get two years of input on the playground. I think our experience would tell us that if we get all that input and those plans sit for two years, whatever we bring forward still might be a surprise to some neighbors. I, you know, I'm not opposed to try to consolidate the meetings as long as we have them as soon as possible. And I'm not, I don't know that there's any issue with there being a longer gap between the implementation of the playground, if that's something the council would support.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, the only difference I think would be is we don't have a consultant on board. Normally, we would hire the consultant and have them help participate in the input process. And because this project's a couple of years out, we have not engaged anybody. So we can do the, we can certainly do engagement without engage, without having a consultant on board. Next year, we would bring that consultant on board to start designing the work. And we'll just have to present them with that neighborhood input as opposed to having them participate in that.
I mean, the one, one, one thing to keep in mind is the, the constituencies for the ball field and for the playground are probably going to be different constituencies. So the, the outreach is going to need to acknowledge that.
Right, well, they, they may be overlapping as well, because everybody's-
Yeah, no, I think they probably will. But I, yeah, there's, you know, based on the comments from two years ago, the, the ball field community extends, you know, it's, Iowa City as a whole, to a certain extent.
I think the bottom line still is that two years ago, we made that commitment, or it was said, that we would revisit in two years. And I think we have to, to stick to that, because I think that some of the community members and neighborhood members may, may have been anticipating that. And whether that means we need to discuss it in a work session, as you'd said, Jeff, you know, do the dirt fill now, but obviously, we need some pub, a little bit of public input on it. Whether it could be electronically, that would be fine too. But I think it just boils down to the two years is passing, and we shouldn't wait another two years.
And I think also, I'm very mindful of all that staff does. And so to consolidate makes sense. You know, you, what you suggested, Jeff, where, where that work can be done, but not to redouble it. And sure, consultant may not, we probably don't, weren't even considering the consultant this year, so there's probably not money for it. But if we could get the input, that seems to make sense, but without unduly burdening staff to, to sets of, of that kind of fact finding. So it's kind of a compromise.
Just for clarification, is the idea for pressing forward this fall with the possible goal of making the change in the ball field next summer, or would that still be two summers away? I wonder what the, the practical advantages between September meeting versus a May meeting next year, like in terms of, does that change us back construction seasons? Because I do agree with the consolidation. I think now we're just figuring out timing, right?
The sooner we have the meeting, the more options in my mind we have for implementation of at least the field, so that if we were to have the meeting this fall, we could, we could make the change to the field, if that were the direction we were to go next spring. You know, so that the, the, the desired outcome could be achieved sooner, whatever that outcome is.
So there is a couple of options that are out there. One is, I think consolidation is, I think the majority of what I'm hearing council agree to, do here, get in the comments from the public. There are ways to get the public comments, maybe not in person, but other avenues. So I wonder if that seems to be the most, is that the direction that we want to give staff, to get comments now, but through different avenues of surveys and such?
Yeah, whatever, whatever seems the most effective way of outreach, given the fact that we're talking about, you know, that, that outreach is going to have to be structured somewhat differently, depending, you know, whether it's the ball field related or playground related.
Okay. Any concerns doing it electronically? Is that something that staff can do?
We can reach out to, you know, our, our partner stakeholders who run baseball organizations. I can tell you what their feedback's going to be. Of course, they're going to want a skinned infield. So we can do that. We can do that electronically. With our park improvements, we really like to be in the neighborhood. We typically would do both. We would have a neighborhood meeting, and we'd send postcards to people to come, come out and visit and talk with us. And then we usually would put something up on social media or on some kind of electronic means to gather input to, with some parks, we'll even put up, hey, here's concept A, B, and C for playgrounds. Tell us what you like and what you don't like. That's where we're going to fall short, because we won't have a consultant to put together some of those concepts for us. We're just going to have to have conversations and then kind of feed in. You know, maybe we can take pictures of playgrounds that we built recently and said, which of these do you, do you like? But I'd still think it's valuable to be in the neighborhood and to talk with folks. Again, the baseball stuff's pretty easy. We can send that out. I could tell you, we could, we could send out Happy Hollow and Court Hill and Willow Creek, and do you want them grass or skinned? The baseball folks are going to want them all, dirt. But we'll get that feedback and present it to you.
Well, well, my, my focus is more on Happy Hollow, Jeff. I mean, I, you know, there are these other recreational fields, which in my view are another subject matter, partly because not all those fields are the equivalent of Happy Hollow. So, I mean, if you want to, if you want to make that, include that in the outreach, that's fine. But my main concern is, is the question of Happy Hollow.
I think the challenge that we have, that when we discussed this two years ago, and I spoke with John earlier today, and my recollection of kind of what we might revisit was, was different. But I think for this question, I don't want people to be led to believe, like if we ask the baseball, you know, certain baseball team, for example, which would you prefer? I don't want them to assume that if they say we'd prefer dirt, that then the council is going to say, yes, that's what we're doing, and we're doing it next year, we're doing it this year, or something like that. So just however the input process happens, I want to be careful that it's not representing to folks that there'll be a particular outcome necessarily. Because I think, you know, for myself, and I, at the time, to be transparent, right, I said, I think we should keep it grass. And based on the input of, of the staff and the use that we were getting at the time, I would be interested in knowing how it's, you know, been used since then. We got some of that information in our, in our packet. But I just don't want the question of collecting input to kind of dictate one outcome or another. Because I think we hear that a lot in our public comment as of, oh, we, you know, there were a number of people with comments that wanted this, but then that's not the guaranteed outcome. So however we structure it, as long as that message is, is clear.
I do think it's going to be very important to go in the community just to make sure that everyone has that optimal opportunity to come and speak. So if that means, you know, because staff does have a lot of things on their play, I mean, I, I think we all know that. So if that does mean that we need to, you know, col, you know, collapse it into next year, then we, I, I think the council intent is that that will take place. And we're discussing it now, even though, you know, we didn't have that foresight to even pre-plan this conversation with, with putting this on staff's agenda, you know. So, so I guess that, so where we are now, we know that the majority of council has said, you know, kind of collapse them together. We want it in the neighborhood. So that does kind of land us at the opportunity of doing it next year, from what I can-
Doing it next year?
Of, of having the meeting next year, of having the, the community come out and have the discussion next year.
Next, next year.
I was, that's not what I was advocating for.
Okay.
We can do it this year.
You can do it this year.
We'll combine them. I think the process will suffer a little bit, especially on the playground side, because we won't have somebody there with us. But we'll have the meeting this year. We'll look at the party in the park or the wreck and roll schedules. If we're going to hit Happy Hollow at a timeframe that we can kind of roll it into that event, that's probably what we'll do. If for some reason the timeline doesn't work, we'll, we'll schedule a special meeting out there with the neighborhood. And then we'll develop some electronic input process for our T-ball and Little Hawks and our various age ranges for, for baseball, and see what the stakeholders would like to see out there. And probably reach out to softball groups too, and see what they have to say.
All right.
I think we'll have to keep in mind, if, if there's a desire to try to move the project up next year, we're going to have to move the 175,000 up into our budget next year. Otherwise, again, there could be a, a two-year gap before, from the time we have the discussion to the actual time in which the improvements are pursued.
But we probably need to be clear with people when we're getting their input, that we're, that we're getting the input now. We're not quite sure yet when implementation will be.
And that was kind of the gist of my question, like, even if we had a meeting this fall and we wanted to make the change, and the consensus was for a change, does that really speed up the process in practicality with the funding and the, could we really actually make the change next summer, or would we have to do it in two years anyway? I mean, there's, are we gaining what we think we're gaining from that? I'm new, so I'm going to go ahead and play that card again. Does that, does it, does that work like that, or?
So the staff can convert the infield on our own. I think if, if the project stayed together, we'd probably roll that, my guess is, we'd probably roll that into one bid, and we'd just have the contractor also do that. But if the community and council desires that we change the ball field over again, we can do that with our staff. It's just prioritizing their time and, and our operational resources to make that conversion. That could happen this year, or it could happen early next year, with our own kind of manpower and, and resources.
So it sounds like we have, we'll direct staff to do something this summer yet, or when it, when it works out?
Yeah, we'll get it put together.
All right. Any other item on this topic?
And on this packet, I think we have to look at item number five, IP5, from the, the letter from the Center for Worker Justice on the wage theft proposal.
I don't know if, is, is there a staff that can give us kind of a just brief?
Well, I think a high, high level summary, when you directed staff to draft an agreement with the Center for Worker Justice, I believe the Center for Worker Justice was under the understanding that they were going to be able to go back to the county and say, hey, look, all the cities are on board, give us some additional money. And when they went there, the county said, no, all of our ARPA funds have now been scheduled, and there, there's, there's no extra money there. So that's, they were hoping for an additional 33,000 from the county. And now, since the county told them they no longer have those funds, the council's coming back and asking for the city to pick up that full 33,000 in addition to what you had committed earlier. The, you know, staff has already been working on an, an ARPA agreement to, to fund what you had previously talked about. We do want to point out that the county's commitment for this is a three-year commitment. So I believe Corville, North Liberty, we're all, we're both five years. If we are to use ARPA funds for this, we can't allow expenditure, all expenditures have to take place before 2026. So we really don't even have five years to, to go from today and fully fund five years, unless you want to use local funds to supplement the ARPA funds. So I think the question to, to council is, do you want to increase your commitment that you already made? The ask is 33,000. And if so, it's, and it's still, it still intends to be a five-year program. I think you just have to understand that we're going to use some ARPA funds when we can, and then we're going to have to transition to, to local funds, you know, in those out years. Otherwise, we can stay with our plan, and we probably won't get a full five-year commitment to the CWJ through ARPA, but we'll get pretty close. We'll go as, as far as we reasonably can with them.
Is it my understanding that the entire $322,000 for this position, that there is no, all this is from municipalities? There is no monies that have been budgeted for the organization itself to submit? And I, I mean, I see the county doing 130,000, the city of Corville committed 40,000, and North Liberty at 35,000. Currently, we're at 85,000, and we're being asked, you know, again, to do that 33,000. So one thing I would say is that I think this is a great program that the CWJ has had and have been supporting individuals within our communities for years. And I think that the work is extremely important. I do have pause when it comes down to solely asking entities to fully support a program. And so, and I would also point out that CWJ is a legacy agency, which is, or they've been, you know, promoted to be a legacy agency, which would be great. Part of their operations, although we know CWJ has been doing a lot of phenomenal work beyond chess with workers. I think they have really supported the council and some of our ARPA needs, when individuals needed support, getting signed up for some of the programs when it came down to eviction prevention. I think they, you know, have done a lot. So this is not a knock against the CWJ. This is me saying, you know, it gives me pause that we have an agency that, you know, will be, beginning funding from the, from the city. So some of the 33,000, certainly, that can come other ways to the city through a request. So I don't think that, because the city is going to continue to make sure that we're invested into this agency. So for me, right now, I think the 85,000 commitment is great. The majority of this council has supported that. And I, I really believe this is a great program. The 85,000 will get them where they, will get them strongly down the road. But when it comes down to seeing a program that has zero funding from an agency, that gives me pause.
I had similar thoughts, Mayor, although I hadn't kind of articulated it that in my mind. I was just thinking of other funding opportunities, not necessarily, you know, the, the agency coming forward and saying, we have so much towards this program, and we just need your support, which I think is very often what we see. And I think as a government, that gives us, you know, additional confidence in the success of a program. I was also just thinking about other funding opportunities in the form of grants, you know, whether it's the Community Foundation or United Way, you know, there's a, a number of other places in the community that I think may be able to assist in kind of filling that last gap. My comfort level, especially given our, some of the strategic plan discussion, understanding where budget's going to be at, that sort of thing, is to stick with our commitment on the 85,000, knowing that they have other opportunities for funding, not just this program, but other programs through the CDPG process, the social justice racial equity grants, as well as other community partners who provide grant funding.
This, this program that CWJ, it's, it's unique to the state, and we have to keep that in mind. And they have done great work. And I was shocked at the amount of wage theft that is out there statewide, and particularly in our community. And I think a large portion of the cases they have followed so far have come from, from our community, which I would think that we, as, as Iowa City, should put more money into it. And, and I think that they've, they would like to know now, I mean, just like you kind of would like to know if you're going to buy a house, what's your budget five, five years down the line? Are you still going to be able to afford this? As I said, this is a very unique portion of the jobs and things that the Center for Worker Justice does. And this is what they're requesting it for, is just this unique portion, because it is a very real problem. And I am for, if, if, I'm glad, Jeff, that you pointed that out, because I hadn't even thought about that, that it has to be spent by 2026. And maybe CWJ didn't realize that either. But I mean, if there's some way that we can help them out with those last couple of years or year and a half, I would be in favor of doing that and helping them out with this.
I think it's important to remember, too, that we're talking about raising this to something that's spread out, the annual cost being, you know, 23,600, which in terms of, you know, the size of the hit on our budget, it's, it's not that big of a percentage in terms- in terms of, on our end of things, but it can make a big impact for workers and for this position. You know, I, I think it's unfortunate that the, the timing, I can appreciate the difficulties of trying to work out the timing using multiple agencies, and it sounds like the timing just fell through for CWJ in terms of they had a plan to have all this funding and it went away before they got it back around to the county. But I can appreciate the difficulty of trying to juggle all these different entities. And certainly, CWJ and Director Sully did go out and, and talk to these different, different groups and made, made a good effort. You know, I think, I think would have been nice to know ahead of time, but I can see why, why that wasn't acknowledged that anybody had ahead of time for the original ask. I think I would still be okay with supporting this increase, but I can definitely see why there's, you know, maybe, maybe I'm sensing a little bit of frustration, but I think it's understandable because of the circumstances. And again, we're still talking about a fairly small amount of money, which could be a huge payout from the city. It could be a huge payout for our community and keep dollars flowing in our community and help the other people that were trying to get affordable housing and everything else. So I still think it's worth it to support this and even to support this, this new ask for an increase.
Jeff, what, how far along is staff on getting this rolled up with the original understanding and what, what has to happen to unroll it and start, and do it again?
We were hoping to get it on your July, or I'm sorry, your June agenda, but there's some complications we have to work out. So, you know, county's using ARPA funds, we're using ARPA funds. The county's doing theirs over three years, and it was supposed to be 15,000 for this fiscal year and then 60 for the next two fiscal years. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but 60, a $60,000 contribution from the county pretty much covers one year of this entire position. And you can't duplicate benefits with federal dollars. So we can't pay the CWJ our, you know, annual amount when the county's already using federal dollars to pay the salary for that year. So what happens is there's a timing issue that we're going to have to work out with all the funding entities. And I don't know at this point if Corvo and North Liberty are using their ARPA dollars, but what we might find is that we have more than enough, we've got more funding than we can use in these early years. And I'm sure what the county did is they front-loaded it in three years because they don't want to run into a situation where they're using ARPA money late into 25 or 26. But these last, last couple of years are going to be a tricky puzzle to figure out, and that's probably what we have to do. We have to, we have to figure that out with the CWJ and the other funding partners before we can come back to you. So possibly your second meeting in June, maybe July, depending on how that all comes together.
Out of curiosity, I understand that we, as the entity that received the ARPA funds, have a, have to spend it by a certain date, but do the agencies to which we give the money have to spend it by that same date on those programs? Is that, is that a, is a commitment that follows down the chain?
Yeah, so it's actually, we have to commit by '24, they have to, all funds have to be spent by '26.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be fine committing those funds, but again, we can't, if the county's paying 60,000 in year one and the position's only 60,000, we can't provide ours on top of that. We have to wait.
It's basically sort of staggered.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
Throughout.
Yeah, I think in an ideal world, we all just fund a percentage of that, but it's not always an ideal world. We have to, we have to kind of figure that piece out. So that's probably the holdup on the contract, but the, the agreement itself or the contract is, is probably a pretty straightforward document. It's just the multiple funding partners and the use of federal dollars is, is complicating.
I don't know when the, you know, when their budget starts, and most budgets, you know, we're used to that July 1. So I think council has to keep that in mind, that if we're, you know, want to commit to something and get something, you know, to a certain degree, we have to just keep that July, I don't know what their budget year is. It sounds like they'll have coverage no matter what.
Yeah, I would think that if they wanted to start moving on a hiring process, there's enough commitment from enough people. I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know that, but, but I don't know that we'd be stopping them or holding them up for months if we take till, you know, two or three meetings from now to get all this hammered out. It would be my, again, would be my guess.
Well, devil's advocate here also, as I understand it, I know that this is a, a new position, a unique position, but one that they're hoping to be have, that it's, it's not a finite position. I mean, it is as far as what the budget is showing us, but I'm assuming that in its own way, it's sort of a precursor of what would hopefully be a sustainable salaried position, right, after these five years? So I guess I'm wondering if there's something to be said that, again, they have, the position is paid for, for the first several years out of what exists right now, which would also allow for an opportunity for CWJ to say, hey, come join in, come buy in with the municipalities. I mean, that's actually oftentimes, it has been used to good effect in some other local efforts to say, the city has kicked in, the least that, you know, can be done is, you know, wouldn't you like to come with us, right? And it, it helps breed more success for an entity and build stronger relationships within the, the, you know, the, the community with different funding partners. So I'm wondering if there is, on the one hand, I recognize, as you say, Pauline, you want to know what your budget is so that you can plan for it accordingly, and I don't fault that one bit. But I'm also wondering, with $33,000 spread over, well, actually, it would be four years starting not even this year, it'd be in advance, that they would be able to, as Mayor had said, fundraise perhaps that amount themselves and work within the community to help strengthen those bonds. I realize on the one hand, like Sean had said, you know, spread over time, this is a small portion of money in our budget and, and yet it would make a difference to CWJ. I'm just mindful of the fact that they are not the only agency that is going to be needing ARPA funds, and there may well be somebody who could use that $33,000. I'm just trying to sort of scope it all out. You all know me well enough that I'm kind of processing out loud here.
I do have a question for you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
Or maybe even for staff, because I heard that $85,000 being, you know, kind of a challenge to be spent by 2026 with the county's commitment. To me, it seemed like maybe we need to, you know, direct staff to go back to CWJ and ask, you know, how, you know, find out from the county how they're going to spend their money, find out, you know, where our money, our 85,000 fits in there? Because if, if they're maxed out, then, you know, our, our PRFons are, you know, could be a mute point beyond the 85,000. So that would be my suggestion at this point is that we, I mean, if, if, we can certainly give direction to do additional funds if we should desire, but it almost sound like if two years, because it'd be a four-year before it has to be spent, if three of those years are already somewhat committed by the county, and we're just talking four years, we're, our $85,000, $85,000 is going to be almost already spent. So I think it, you know, if council would agree, maybe we could, you know, go back, have him, have staff go back to CWJ and try to figure out those details, because then the ask may not be for our PRFons. And then I think that's a totally different conversation. And again, I, I mean, this is an agency that is, you know, has been promoted, suggested for it being a legacy agency. None of the other communities have the robust programs that the city of Iowa City has. So I don't know if council would be in agreement, because I, I think we don't know how the $85,000 is going to be spent right now.
I mean, I, I would be in agreement in having, in going back to CWJ, given how the county funds are being front-loaded, to actually see how the numbers are going to break down before we have to make, before we have to make a decision on this, because right now, we just don't know what we can.
I would agree.
Do with ARPA funds.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, you know, the, this wage theft concept whole, and if, if they need additional funding from the city, from Iowa City, I'm, I'm supportive of that, but it, it does seem it would be helpful to have, at this point, some clarification as to how the, how these funds will be expended over the five-year period.
All right. It sounds like the majority of council is going to direct staff to bring us more information, just figure out, you know, how does our money and the county money, ARPA funds fit in this? Anything else on, on June 2nd? I'm going to bring up USG. Yes, I'm going to welcome them right now, so the University of Iowa Student Governments for their updates and welcome.
Hi, council. Keaton, would you be willing to say the first one?
Yes. Hi, my name's Keaton. I'm the deputy city liaison for USG. And the first item on our announcements is the Board of Regents meeting approved the Iowa Center for School Mental Health and UI College of, College of Education, which is a partnership between Iowa Department of Education and the university to address the state's mental health problems.
Additionally, on behalf of USG, Keaton and I would like to extend our heartbrokenness to hear about the tragic shooting that resulted in the deaths of two Iowa State University students, Vivian Flores and Eden Maria Monteng, this past Thursday. We encourage everyone or anyone affected by this news to utilize the University of Iowa's counseling services. If you or a loved one would benefit from this assistance, please call or text the UIowa Support and Crisis Line, 844-461-5420. That's 844-461-5420. And that's all of our announcements today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees?
Had our monthly EC-COG meeting, I guess it was more than a week ago now, and looking for that Envision East Central Iowa report coming out, I believe in July is what they're pegging now, which was referenced in our, the presentation from ICAD, but looking forward to seeing that.
And it sounds like it's going to align, have some similarities in alignment with Better Together 2030.
What case?
Great, great. All right. Any other updates?
General updates?
That'd be after council meeting. All right, we are adjourned until?
May I, may I interrupt, just to do a plug?
Yes.
Just a good citizen plug, that primary day tomorrow is, is tomorrow. And that everyone should get out and vote, take part. And if you do not know where your precinct is, because some of them have changed, we have expanded precincts, you can find that out on the iowa.gov site. It's sos.iowa.gov backslash elections, backslash footer reg polling place. If you just sort of comb through the radio button, then the options, you'll be able to find your polling place. And it's just, it's going to take you no time at all, and it's a wonderful thing to do, and it's going to help shape what's going to happen in November, so.
I appreciate you sharing that, because it is kind of some new landfill for people to go vote, and some things have changed. So tomorrow's voting day, so we encourage people to go vote. If nothing else, for the good of the cause, we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM.